Okay, Bob and Richard, you can see our screen, correct?
I can see the agenda.
You're sharing your agenda screen.
Yes, thank you. We, the camera's not working unfortunately, so you won't be able to see in the room, but you will be able to see the screen and hear everybody.
That is correct.
Sounds fine. Thank you.
Bonnie, you're gonna have to really articulate.
Okay, I was just saying, we can see your lovely faces up there.
Okay, and now we can hear you, Bonnie.
All right, I'm screaming into the microphone.
I love it. Perfect.
Welcome to the planning board meeting of July 20th, 2022. I'll do roll call first. Alden Clark.
Here.
Beth Delio.
Here.
Bob Cow.
Here.
Jamie Pennington is absent. Heather Rogers.
Yeah.
Rick Tanger.
Here.
Richard Yeager.
Here.
Bob Walters is absent. Bonnie Sontec here. Is Linda logged in?
I do not see her at the moment.
Okay. So Beth and anybody else who wants to take notes and care when they have to, we'll write up the notes sometime. Andy Porter is also here from the planning end of the bell. The agenda. We had a change to the agenda, so the first item is the approval not required for Hind Street. Then, request for minor modification at 13 Doyle Drive, followed by a request for a minor modification at 25 Duffy Drive, and an informal discussion pre-application about market landing park expansion. There are several minutes to approve, and then updates from the chair or the planning director. So we'll move into the first item, which is approval not required for 6 to 14 Hind Street, and Andy's going to explain it for us.
Sure. The applicant isn't here this evening, so I'm just giving a brief overview. These are pretty standard. We have two property owners who are splitting some of the rear yard. This one, you may be familiar with. You actually approved or endorsed this plan several months ago, but they wanted to make a slight tweak to it. So where you see this back line right here, they're making a very slight tweak to that line. Just gonna zoom in on that. This very slight adjustment right here, just to accommodate this feature here. So that's all they're doing, is to change that alignment from the plan that it was, as it was previously aligned, and the office recommends endorsement of the plan.
Any questions or comments? Take a motion to approve.
To endorse.
Oh, to endorse, sorry.
And I moved to endorse the plan.
Second.
Okay, I'll call a roll. Alden?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Richard? Hello, Richard?
I muted myself. Yes, sorry. Yes.
Okay, Bonnie, yes. So that's endorsed and good to go. Now, request for minor modification at 13 Doyle Drive. We don't have anybody here representing the applicant.
Correct. I believe they're online. Vincent, do you want to address the board? I can pull up the plan and any other visuals that we have that you've submitted.
Sure, that'd be great.
Okay, so let me actually just start with the context of the subdivision, just so everybody knows where, what lot it is that we're talking about. Can you all hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry, we have to talk very close to these microphones. So this is the plan of the OSRD, Colby Farm Lane. This, I'm just zoomed in here to the lots that are for development purposes, not the open space surrounding it, which you can see at the bottom. The lot in question is actually this lot right here. So we'll be taking a look at the layout of that one in just a moment. I'm just gonna switch to that. And then Vincent, did you want to give, from this plan here of your lot, just give an overview of what you'd like to do for the board?
Yeah, so, so the, the kind of rectangular yellow figure right there, we're looking to put in a, it's essentially a plunge pool. It's, it's, it's kind of small on that, but it's 13 feet long, seven feet wide. It's, you know, it's within setbacks, and it's just gonna be kind of set off from the side of our deck, which you can see on the plan there. It's, it's three feet into the ground, so it's really more of a, I guess you'd call it like a glorified hot tub. That's, that's a little nicer.
Sorry, I was just looking for a, I thought there was a graphic that you had submitted. No?
Yeah, we did.
Sorry, gonna cry and baby here.
That's quite right. I'm just looking, because I thought that you had actually submitted a rendering, and I thought we had that here.
Um, we did, yeah. I have to try to. I can look for it, Andy, if you need us to try to resend it.
That's right. I just, I'm not seeing it here.
Okay. Yeah, so essentially, yeah, essentially with, within the setbacks, we're just looking to put in this, and you know, our HOA has approved it. I believe, yeah, Dave, Dave Daley is a developer who still has the open permit, has co-signed it as a, as a minor modification. So we're just looking for approval to be able to put that in, you know, if at all possible.
Thank you. And for the board, as we mentioned, the staff report, part of the reason the applicants here before you is because with these smaller lots and the OSRDs, the applicants are looking essentially for a waiver here of elements that might be placed within the 100 feet of the wetland resource area. That goes back to one of the provisions in the zoning ordinance, and so the board just has to review and approve that. I did have an exchange with the conservation administrator, and it's our understanding that the commission, although it hasn't formally approved this yet, she does not anticipate the commission having any issues with this. In fact, what the issue that was attempted to be resolved in the prior weeks, leading up to now, and Vincent knows this because he's been waiting, he's on hold a little bit, is that Daley's been finishing some punch list issues, and so Daley had agreed to add this, sign on to this, and add it in reference to their open permits, and that way we would not have any open overlapping permits between the owners of this lot and the developer who's still completing their punch list. So that, with that being said, the conservation commission is expected to review and approve the same plan that you see here.
Do you clarify on the diagram, we're 100 feet back from the wetland buffer area line is?
Sure, so this, oh, sorry. Yeah, so this, this distance right here, that is 100 feet from the wetland, which is down here to the rear of the lot, to the.
There's a 100-foot marker right near the shed. What's that? That's showing that line.
Oh, you're talking about this line right here?
No, no, I just saw 100 feet.
That, that 100 feet is labeling this line, though. This.
So that's the 100-foot from the.
Yeah, it.
So the pool is right on the edge of that.
Tried to just grab something that I could do it. Yeah, so if you look, this, it's just labeling that line right there.
But where the pool is, it does require a waiver.
Correct.
Okay, so before us, we had decided this is minor, and if it's minor, we deal it tonight. We had to decide if we approved a waiver, and we put a condition in that it has to be all reviewed and approved by the conservation commission.
Andy, can you explain, or the applicant explain, why, why we're not approving? The last time we talked about this, we said we were gonna see it after the conservation commission. So can you explain why? Is there an urgency for us to deal with it, or when is the conservation commission going to act on this?
Sure, well, I'd love to speak from his, from his end, you know, online, but the bottom line, I guess, is that we've had some exchange over the last couple of months, probably at this point, with Vincent, Jennifer Bunche, the zoning administrator, and, and the development team, all trying to work together here to resolve, because they have not closed out their punch list on the subdivision. We did not want to have open, open overlapping permits where the parties could then be dispute over who's responsible for completing work and what's in compliance within the permit area or not. So, so the request several weeks ago, or months ago, a month or so ago at this point, was postponed with the expectation that the commission would review and approve this, and then advise the planning board that they were comfortable with it, at which point the planning board would approve. However, if you go back to the language of the ordinance, there's nothing that precludes the planning board from approving it conditional upon the conservation commission's approval, so that in basically in sequence, the planning board can approve first, conservation commission afterwards. I think from the applicant's perspective, and Vincent can speak from this, you know, on his end, but I think they're looking to expedite any of the sort of procedural aspects of this, so they can essentially get this structure in and, you know, taking advantage of some of the season maybe.
Yeah, I appreciate Andy. Yeah, so we, we've been trying to do this, I think, since February, and you know, I, I think we, we were, we were held up because of the open permit, and, you know, we're just, we're, you know, we're, we're not trying to put in a gigantic pool by any means, and we're, we're trying to be within the, within all the setbacks, within, you know, within the all approvals and everything. Like I said, it's not a big pool. It's, it's 13 feet long, seven feet wide, so it, it's, it really doesn't take up a lot of space in the yard, but it would be important to us and our family if we can get this going, because they've been waiting to have a pool again since, since the spring, and, you know, we, we would, we would hate to keep pushing this off any further.
Clarify, I mean, even if we voted in favor, they can't do anything until the developer completes all the punch list items and gets a sign off of conservation.
No, well, again, I'll defer to the conservation administrator, but our understanding is that they would be able to proceed with this work now, but Daley would not be able to close out the punch list on their project without knowing that this work is in compliance. So effectively, Daley's agreed to allow, to work with them, or allow that work to proceed already, the permit that they have. I'll defer to the conservation administrator on that, but that's my understanding, talking with both Jennifer Bunche, the zoning administrator, and the conservation administrator about this. They would need both approvals to proceed with the work, but the Daley has been essentially taking this into account in their open permit.
Maybe I didn't understand. So, so they still, they do need the conservation commission to act on this.
That's, that's correct.
And so, you know, before I, I guess, come back to the question of the conservation commission not be last part, or, or why, why is the conservation commission waiting for us?
Sure. Vincent, I don't know if you can answer that question. I've only attended one conservation commission recently meeting, so I don't know if you've talked with Julia about that scheduling.
Um, no, we, we were just, we, we were told we had to go through this, this process first. And then, and then, and then we can actually, we could just go down to conservation and have them kind of sign off on it. Where we're, we're, we're all putting, Sydney isn't a disturbed area already. I mean, this, this was all ripped up, this area, you know, when this construction was going on, so we're not disturbing a, an area that hasn't been touched in a while either, so, you know, but, you know, after, if we get this approval, our next step would be to go meet with conservation at, you know, at their office and, you know, look for approval there.
He made me confused, because it's not just meeting at the office, but if he has to go to the conservation commission.
Correct. You're, you're, Vincent, you're aware that the conservation commission is, their meetings are on Zoom these days, but they, you'd be attending one of their meetings.
Oh, okay.
When do those take place? Sorry, this is Michelle Mahone, we're here.
They take place on alternating Tuesday evenings.
Okay.
Okay.
So again, you, you, this is a follow-up you all want to do with Julia, so we can talk in the office tomorrow, but you want to follow up with Julia to make sure that you're on their agenda for the same. This is the.
Yeah, no, we appreciate. Like I said, we just, we were told this was the order to go in, so that's the, that's the reason we, we want.
Yeah, it, it, we don't have Julie with us, it's quite possible that the suggestion there was at the planning board review to see whether or not it's substance, it would be comfortable with it under the OSRD prior to the commission reviewing it under the newer conditions, but I defer to them on that.
Actually, I thought we already said, thought we said we were comfortable with it, that we had to go to the conservation first. So that was a couple of months.
Yeah, all I can tell you is that we had talked about finding a way in which the planning board could approve first, and the conservation commission possibly second. I don't know about the timeframe of the conservation commission. I'd have to defer to Vincent and Julia on any discussions they've had about their schedule. If you feel uncomfortable approving this here, you could defer it until after the conservation commission. What we were trying to do was to determine if there was a way for the planning board to review it, and this is where we came to. I'd have to defer to Vincent and just Julia on discussions they've had about timeframe, or why this is not, you know, you know, previously.
I guess I don't, I don't want to bounce these people around, but I think they forget, they've got that advice somewhere. And because I think, we, we were pretty clear, the last time we looked at it, it's, let's wait till the conservation commission approves it, and then come backwards. And I get what you're saying about, there's nothing that says we can't do it this way, but I believe the language of the ordinance that I have in front of me says the planning board should do this with the advice of the conservation. You haven't got any advice from the conservation.
Understood. I can offer you the advice that I received from the conservation administrator, and I understand that's not the body. Yeah, you can, you can sort of discuss that, that's understandable. At any rate, I understand your concern. I'd have to defer to Vincent and Julia on why this was or was not on the last conservation commission agenda. I certainly had no objection to that being processed that way, but I do not know what discussions they've had, if they were told, again, like I said, possibly to come here and get the planning boards concurrents on the substance of it first. Maybe that's what happened here, but.
Yeah, well, I'll, I'll speak up. I mean, honestly, from day one, we were told we cannot get in front of anybody because Daley has open permits, and until that's closed out, we can't speak to anybody. Literally, we've been trying. We've sent everything in. We've done all of our due diligence. We are looking for anything to just move this along, and even if it's an approval subject to conservation approving it, it would just skip an extra step for us.
We've been waiting since February, and we're actually supposed to be on a meeting, and we were told that same day of that meeting that they've decided, because he did have that open permit, they weren't gonna grant it. So we expected it, put a down payment on this at that time, and now have been dragged out for the past five months.
Yeah, it's, guys, it's, it's, it's been a long, long thing that gets going on. I mean, what we are asking is if, if, if the board is okay with, with it, if conservation approves it, and then that we can move forward would be great. We prefer to go that route than have to continue to keep coming back in the meetings.
This is Chair Bonnie Sontec. I'm not gonna worry about the procedure. We're here tonight, and we have it before us, and I think we should just vote on it and move it forward, and then the next part of the process is clearly between you folks and the conservation commission. If anything goes awry, this condition will be in there so that you would have to come back to us, but I doubt that's gonna happen in the sense of things. So you guys can really make it possible for you to move forward, and I wish we had done this back in February, but there was a different reading of the whole situation, and the advice I got from Julia that was a whole off. And she's obviously, we thought it, we'll work some things out, and Daley would find this most of it. So it's okay. Let's just deal with what's in front of us tonight, and I'll ask board members if they'd like to comment further on the application itself.
So I'll make a comment. So looking at the standard for the waiver, in my opinion, I don't think the standards met. If we're gonna grant a waiver, it needs to substantially further goals of the OSRD section, and otherwise be in the best interest of the community, and I don't. No, I mean, within the 100-foot buffer, you know, I don't know that if originally proposed, we would have said that this was good for project, or would have approved the project with a structure like this in that area. And so, from what I gather, looking at, you know, if a buffer area shall be provided, and we can waive buffer requirements in certain circumstances, and it is, if the waiver will substantially further the goals, or otherwise be in the best interest of the community, and I don't see how waiving them in this case is, and I actually am concerned about the rest of leaving the buffer requirements.
I have another question. When this first came to us, you noticed that the shed wasn't constructed within the buffer without any fire approval?
I believe that's correct, yeah.
So, is that gonna be voted into this request to, to, to get the conservation commission's approval on the shed as well as the punch pool?
Yes, both of these would require that approval.
Yeah, we, we did apply for a permit for that shed, so, yeah, so that was approved, so I, I didn't, we didn't realize we had to go through any planning board approval for that, but we did go, got the correct permits for that, was approved for that, you know.
If I'm not mistaken, it's possible that that was signed off on, the zoning administrator might have signed off on the billing permit for the shed.
Without going to the conservation.
That's correct. And it may be, keep in mind that these OSRDs are somewhat limited in new report, and we've had, as you can see later on the agenda, we have several of these things coming up, and this is the difficulty with OSRDs, is that the lots are given smaller size, the developer proposes smaller lot sizes, makes it more difficult for folks to do things on them, you know, they're, they're purchasing smaller lots, but when they want to do those things, that requires some exceptions, and, and that's part of the, you know, going back to the original approvals, that's why these things have to come back before the board, because the plans have have limited that to some degree by granting waivers for the lot sizes, and the question here is, is that, you know, compile, you know, if that's compounded by each lot doing that, has that become a problem? Whether it be for the environment or the, the resource areas, or just the massing and scale inside the development.
Yeah, and again, this is, this is only, it's, 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 it's not like your normal pool. It's three feet in the grounds. It's, it's not very large, and I believe it is within the 100 feet. So I, you know, I, I think we're, we're not looking to be building right on the conservation area, or, or, you know, anywhere that's gonna disrupt that area. Yeah, we, we do, you know.
We do also have an email from the town engineer saying that it would not disrupt stormwater management or anything like that.
Yeah, so we reached out and tried to just make sure we were covering all our bases when we were looking for approval of this.
This is that graphic I was gonna locate.
Oh, yeah.
This gives you an idea of the, the scale. Obviously, most of this is submerged.
Can I ask actually a follow-up question? I noticed that there was also gonna be the addition of pavers and fence. I'm just wondering if there are dimensions, or if there's maybe a patio surrounded.
Yeah, we're just, we're actually just gonna do a little catwalk around it, which, which would probably be, I think it's 18 inches around of just like a pavers, just around the, the perimeter of the, the pool itself. And then we're gonna be, so the, the pool actually comes with a cover with a lot, which is, which, which we'll, we'll have on, but we're also putting a fence between us and the, the neighbor as well to be in compliance with, with just fencing for pools.
Is there lighting in the pool?
What'd you say? I'm sorry.
Is there, will there be lighting?
Um, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll have, um, yeah, it's, we'll have just kind of a little, little lights around it, just for, just for safety reasons, and just ambient lighting at night. And then the actual soap pool itself, I believe, has a light in the pool as well.
Following up on Beth's question, so what is actually the amount of area that we are, is it? Was it seven by three, or was it, I mean, thirteen by seven, or was it thirteen by seven plus 18 inches all the way?
Yeah, I, I was, well, 13 by seven is the, the dimensions of the, of the actual pool, and then pavers, that will be a cowwalk around it, it'll be about 18 inches, so if, yeah, so if you, yeah. Yeah, yeah, I'd say that'd be safe. 160 square feet or less.
So, so with that additional 18 inches, is it still gonna be? What, what is this setback requirement? Is this a setback requirement? Is this a setback requirement? Is that?
From, from the lot line.
Yeah.
Is that just the pool, or is it the pool plus the perimeter?
That's just the pool structure technically, yeah. With the, with the pavers, sure, unless the planning board is conditioning it somehow.
And then clarify, please, where the fence is gonna be?
Yep, so we're, we're actually, we're gonna split that cost with our neighbor, so it's gonna go right down the lot line, which you could sort of see, I believe it's that dark line on the, kind of to the left of, of the, of the pool on the, on the diagram here.
And it's gonna go the whole length of your property to the back?
Um, yep, it'll go all the way to the back fence, and then it'll go halfway up and to, you know, to where the, you know, halfway up where the house is, then we'll cut over and we'll have a gate.
So it's partially across the back?
No, it's fully, it'd be fully across the, across the side. The back will have, we won't have anything along the back. We'll just, and then, and then it's gonna cut over to the house.
The fence installation, it's going down towards the resource area, they're gonna need approval for that fence as well, but I assume that's gonna be shown on, Vincent, I assume that's gonna be shown on the plan for the conservation commission?
Yeah, we'll put that on there.
That's correct. It's not shown here, no. The, I, I do know that the applicant has spoken with Jennifer and with Caitlin, and I'd asked, you know, obviously for a plan that shows sufficiently, obviously, this is what resulted from that discussion they had had about a plan of the improvements.
Let me, let me try with the motion.
Well, are there other people who wanna speak? I don't wanna just limit it to us. Richard, do you have anything you wanna add?
No. I've been listening tightly.
Nothing to add, Bonnie. No.
So I'll make this motion, and we'll see where it goes. So the motion is to consider the request for modification minor, to approve said minor modification request and waiver request for 13 Doyle Drive, pursuant to the new report zoning order in section 14J 822, with the condition that no swimming pool permit shall be issued until the conservation commission shows us to figure compliance with the original OSRD subdivision. And also, so actually, I thought this was saying the opposite, what you were saying. Sorry, sorry. It says we're not, we're going to, we're, no permit is gonna be issued until they comply with all the touches.
That is the language that was suggested in the staff report.
Well, let's keep it in here.
So approves a significant compliance with the original OSRD subdivision, and also approves the consent waiver request to build the pool at 13 Doyle Drive within the 100-foot wetland buffer of this OSRD. And I was gonna add the words, provided that the conservation commission votes to recommend the and provided that there should be no further construction in the 100-foot buffer, because that gets away from the fence. They have applied to this. So what's?
In my mistake, we could perhaps include garbage in the approval referencing a fence on that lot line. It's up to you.
Okay, I'll go backwards.
Give me, I need the extra luggage.
Yeah, well, I was saying. Consider the request for modification minor, and approve said minor modification request and waiver request for 13 Doyle Drive, pursuant to the new report zoning order in section 14J 822, and to include a fence along the property line with.
Southern side, the southern.
The southerly property line. With the condition, the no swimming pool permit or fence permit shall be issued until the conservation commission approves a significant compliance with the original OSRD subdivision, and also approves the consent waiver request to build the pool at 13 Doyle Drive within the 100-foot wetland buffer area of this OSRD, provided that the conservation commission votes to recommend the way said conservation commission approval should be submitted as part of the swimming pool permit application.
So you've added, provided conservation commission votes to approve this.
Second amendment, votes recommend. Second amendment, votes recommend.
That's it.
Yes.
That's your new thesis.
Fence.
Yeah. Okay, that's the motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? All right, we're gonna shoot the vote. Alden?
Yes.
Uh, Beth?
No.
Uh, Bob?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Um, Heather?
Yes.
Uh, Rick?
Yes.
Richard?
No.
Got a no?
That's a no.
You mean six? No, it's minus. We only need five.
Uh, I, I would argue that the original special permit threshold applies.
I'm saying no as well.
We want to. In terms of procedure, um, we want to lead it with a. Can we have another vote to, they can't come back, right?
Uh, no, it's minor modification that can come back. Uh, yeah, I, I guess the question here is, uh, if, if there's any guidance that could be given to the applicant, uh, for things that might make it more palatable. Uh, whether it be location or changes in any form, whether or not the applicant could perhaps return to a future meeting to, uh, to tweak this somehow. If, or if it's.
You would like the advice of the conservation commission. Because we're assuming that at least I made the decision and I heard from Beth as well. Then this is in the, in the buffer zone and along with that, um, setting precedent. I'm, I'm a hundred percent with that one. Richard, do you wanna say anything to weigh your vote? No?
No, I concur about setting precedent, but the, to recommend to the applicant, is there no consideration for being able to do this? Without encroaching on the buffer zone? I'm just looking at this site plan. I don't have much to go on, but. Wondering if there's adjacent, you know, to the deck, if you will, to the, uh, right. I, I hate to play designer, but it just seems like there's maybe an opportunity without encroaching on the buffer zone and tripping all these wires.
There's no wires there? I'm confused. There's no wires. I, I guess.
Alright, that's a euphemism.
I'd like to know the concern about the environment or whatever.
Excuse me, that's a euphemism, meaning is there a way to put, place it without encroaching on the buffer zone? Simple as that.
No. We've looked at all the areas. I guess, what are the concerns? I'd like to know the environmental concerns, the, what the actual concerns are. I'd like a list of them.
Yes, that's so agree. Um, we are concerned because we are not experts on this and we wanna have the advice from the conservation commission.
So you're concerned about a three foot deep hole in our yard?
Look, we don't have any more information than you do about the environmental impacts. Um, we wanna make the right decision because this is the kind of decision that can set precedent. For other applicants who say, oh, you let them go into the buffer zone. Now you're saying you can't, we can't do that. So we are not the experts on the environmental impact of building in a disturbing, significantly disturbing land in the buffer area. So we would like you to go to the conservation commission and get, um, their approval first, which is what we had agreed to do back in. Whenever OSHI first put in this application to us and we would just feel a whole lot more comfortable moving forward with their expertise telling us what the right thing to do.
Well, I'd just like to point out that that was never made clear to us.
I'm sorry about that.
Okay. Well, it's been five months and it was never made clear to us. Within that five months, I will go to conservation. Um, but I will voice my concerns to certain people about this. Thank you. Have a great night.
So we'll move on to the next, um, application on our general business, which is a request for a minor modification at twenty five W Drive. And we have the applicant with us, who's been very recently waiting. Thank you so much. Uh, just a moment. Andy is the mic on over there so you can speak in.
Uh, yes, if you speak in like that should be working. Um.
Yes, you're on. Go for it. So you are?
David Green from twenty five W Drive.
Wonderful. Tell us what you wanted to do.
Well, we are looking at existing patio we have in the backyard. We wanted to put in a fourteen foot by fourteen foot hexagon shaped pavilion. And once again, it's on an existing, uh, patio area. And then too much things in picture when he's got there, except ours would have, uh, six posts with the hexagon. Would be one leader in there. I've shown it, it's drawn, but anyway. Um, it'd be fourteen by fourteen. So it's a little bit less than two hundred square feet. And from what I was told, that that's the picture, we go right over where that rounded area ends. Basically, right in there, it fits, we put right in there without, uh, adding or doing anything different for that. And that was the way it was when we moved into the house, when we bought the house, which you saw in the picture. And I guess the concern was that there was, uh, roof, uh, lot coverage or roof space of something of that nature. And, uh, so we're just deciding now we can get approved for the pavilion, uh, as requested. Or if not, um, we would like to put in a pergola, which we have a look. And I've got the, the information on that also. If you look at the shape, it would be a, or excuse me, rectangle in your shape. And it would also be placed in that exact same area. Not sure.
Do you stand with the claims instructors you're proposing?
Uh, one, one is a pavilion, so it's, there would be no floor. It would be mounted right directly on top of that. They'd drill holes into the post hole into the existing area there. And there would be six post holes holding up the pavilion where we have a roof on. The, the pergola would be a, we're looking at probably a twelve foot by sixteen foot. It's on that drawing right there. And then we had four poles, which apparently would go in the same area, but would have an open roof style, you know, like these. Yeah, pretty rough, but it would look like that as opposed to an actual roof. And to my knowledge, the roof space itself was the concern. We have a, uh, kind of a range style house, so it would be a lot sized. There's already quite a bit of a space, think about, I think about twenty five percent that either Jennifer or Caitlin mentioned. And then they got back in the other day and said, well, with this five percent overage, maybe the board can, can take a look at it and see what you folks think. So, um, I guess I'm here just to find out what you may approve. If you would like the pavilion, the pergola would be fine. And no, I'm not gonna ask for pool.
You're not in a buffer area anymore? How? Comment, everybody?
Question? This is a question maybe for, for Andy. Um, so when reading the staff report, it sounds like it's well under. The five hundred three square feet. It's listed. Is that the same thing as the five percent?
Uh, it's within that.
What is the five, what is the five hundred three? Where does that come from? So, so the five hundred square feet of which in previous materials did for the H O A document. And so I'm wondering whether there that five hundred three.
Oh, yeah, sorry. There was a spreadsheet provided to the zoning administrator. Uh, this is going back some time and I don't, I don't recall that you were.
So this is, this is the five percent.
This is within that, this is that five percent. Right, that's, yeah, yeah.
So this, this structure with a roof is less than the five hundred.
That five, right.
And so it's also less than five percent. So, so this change is allowable for the H O A.
Which the planning board had previously approved, yes. And in fact, if it was, if it was just the cover, that would not be something that has to come up with the planning board. Here, it's because the structure itself is creating more massing. More impermeable, right?
I, I begin to see. So just a question then, maybe for Andy as well. Um, given that if, if you look at the, the, the structure with the roof, um, and turn over the, the runoff net, is that just going on to the patio?
It, it is effectively the same water. So I guess, you know, that's why I mentioned the, the massing, uh, consideration, because again, these are OSRDs, smaller lots, tighter neighborhoods. Um, you know, this one may be less of a tight OSRD than say Olio Woods or, or the Colby Farm one, um, i- in some senses. But, uh, because of that, it's not just the, um, that, you know, the coverage and you're us, yes, that water is just gonna flow right off the roof into the ground, you know, as it would in the grass or the patio. Correct.
Do you understand correctly who wants to look at sort of the massiveness of it, um, with the states? Um, of one structure versus another or one of all? If you don't think everybody has. Do you have a preference for either or? Richard, can I go to you and ask your comments?
I believe it meets the criteria and I would, uh, endorse approving.
For which structure?
The more simplified structure if possible, the, the second sketch that we saw.
Okay, the second option, the, the, um. The pergola rather than the pavilion. Can you read?
Correct. Yeah, it's more in keeping, so.
It's more, I'm sorry, very hard to do.
In keeping with the design intent, but we're, we have limited to what we're, we can react to, so it's, it's. A best decision based on the material in front of us. That image has more compelling. The simple pergola.
Okay. Bob, do you have any comments?
Uh, no additional comments, Bonnie. No.
Yes.
And also, also if you're looking the other way, is there not?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's nobody to the left of us, nobody behind us. We're on the, uh, material area, you'll go, of course, there. So that's all the open, uh. Our, our yard goes back well beyond where that patio ended. Not well beyond, but you know, another ten feet beyond that. So we're anywhere near the border, if you will. That's, that's me right there.
Obviously dark construction.
From the, the person on the, you know, on the bike side.
Can I just ask, um, for the height of each, is the pergola measured? How is the pergola measured? How long is the height of that?
And, and the pavilion will be, you know, basically the same ceiling height, but then where you saw the dome roof, I guess you call it, will be about, let's say, twelve feet.
The pavilion's gonna feel bigger. It's gonna have a much greater presence, if you will, less, um, tran- not transparent. What's the word I'm looking for, Bob?
Well, you're.
Less open.
Less open. There you go. Thank you, Bob.
Do you, do you have pavilions like, you can see the dimensions of the basement for a very close?
Let's see. Was it?
Yeah, I'm, I'm sort of leaning toward what Richard was saying, that the impact of the roof structure and, and all the. I don't know the right term for it, but all the, the structure of the whole thing is much more, um. Significant. Trying not to find the right word, but the, the, um, in, in comparison to the trellis, what I'm calling the trellis, the pergola. Is open, you can have planting zone or so on. And while it might cover the same amount of space visually. It, it feels, um, more in keeping with the open space around there and, and your house. So I'm leaning in that direction. If you're saying one or the other is okay with you.
Well, we're more of the pavilion. It's not that one or the other was, uh, you know, basically.
We put in the pavilion and going back and forth with Jennifer and, um. And Diana, we was, uh, and Caitlin, uh, they recommended that, uh. You know, we, we still give it a try because that's what we wanted, but they, she said one time that we weren't gonna approve it. And then they found this zoning investigation that you just mentioned. And I had no idea what was, you know, didn't even know about that. Wish we would've found that out a month ago when we first started asking for, for that. But, um, you know, all kind of got changed up and they were, I mean, I was saying, well, the pavilion might not work, so. It really, you know. We didn't prefer it, so.
Richard, I hear you. Wanna speak again?
Just to comment and add to what you had just provided, the pavilion has a sense of formality and ornateness. Which I don't think is in keeping. If you were to bring up the existing photographs of the, the home and the patio. The trellis offers a little more informality and a little more open and I think is more in keeping with the adjacent structure. I don't know if you wanna share the photographs.
Yeah, that, that captures what I was struggling with. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I mean, we may, maybe wanted to, you know, for a shade thing and I have to have some shade that there's some point these things to get those screens and close up.
Sure.
So, I mean, it's fine. I just want, we're gonna get the approval for one or the other.
And the, um, so part of the discussion here is about adding impermeable coverage. But if it were the pergola, would they still need, would they still need the minor modification for the unroofed structure or the?
I, I'm not convinced that that is necessarily needed here. Again, I defer to the zoning administrator, but I think your inclination is correct that it is a precautionary measure. I think it might be beneficial to prove, but, uh, to your point, I think technically speaking, probably not because it's not enclosed, uh.
But so the, so the mission is, is not so much for accessories, but as it is for coverage.
Correct.
Just like to just add one more thing, just for your information, uh, if you were to do the pergola, pergola. That doesn't count against the five hundred room square feet that you're allowed to add to your property under the law and the association. So it would be better one to do something else under a lot, um, like a punch pool.
I think I dare ask that.
Then we'd be able to do.
I, I understand. Just to add, from my point of view, I think the, the pavilion, uh, way it, way it situated on the patio closer to the house and the open space around. Um, I'm not that concerned with the, the massing of that. I think it would be more associated with the house and blended with the house when you see it from. From the other areas, the open areas and so forth. I think it would be more associated with the house and blended with the house when you see it from, from the other areas, the open areas and so forth. So I'm, I'm not that concerned about the massing. Nobody will see it, it's very clear, you aren't that.
When we make, when we make the motion, we have to know which structure we're making it for. Let's start with the pavilion because that's the applicant preference. Specify that is wording here.
We'd assume the planning board.
Specify that is added in. Yeah, sure. Okay, let's just have a motion here.
I'd like to make a motion to consider the request for minor modification by.
A second.
Writing and thinking and calling names. Yeah. Okay, so the motion is to consider this a minor modification. And I'll take a roll on that. Alden?
Yes.
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 Heather?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes. So. Keep it in here with us and now we make. Decision on what we're going to approve as a structure. And the applicant's preference is to go for the pavilion first with the roof on it. So I'll take a motion to that effect if the, the motion is to approve the minor modification request for a pavilion.
And just to clarify, if, if this motion doesn't carry, then we can move on to the second.
Correct.
So I will make a motion to, to approve the minor modification request for 25 W drive with the pavilion.
Second.
Okay, so this is with the pavilion. Alden?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Richard?
No.
And Bonnie, no. One, two, three, four, five. Whoops. Is it named? Oh, no, five for a minor. Now we're going to go.
Well, keep in mind, this is part of the special permit, so.
I would like to make a motion to approve the minor modification request 25 W drive for the pavilion.
A second.
Just a question, but we want to consider continuing this until next one members present.
I don't, that's a risky business because people are getting sick all the time unless you want to do that. You want to hold on until we have other board members here?
There will be another one yet or?
Yeah, because when I'm meeting officially, you can call this one. You want to move on. Okay. So pergola motion was Rick, doing that, that is the second. And let's do another roll call. Alden?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Yes, Bonnie, yes. Get yourself a pergola.
When do I, what are you installing?
So this will get, it has to be signed and reported first, so I need, will they have total permits?
Yeah, the, we can take care of this very quickly, of course, but we'll get that, we'll look at the formality of the certificate here signed. And that way it can pass on to the zoning administrator and the building commissioner. You'd want to follow up with Caitlin tomorrow morning. Yeah, she's the one that's going to, we'll, we'll follow up on the language here, but she's going to be printing that out and having that sign.
Thank you very much. Would you like to join the planning board?
Actually, no, I, I, I would like to, I already need to follow up.
My too. I need him in the, I'll need. I'll follow. I don't know why I did that. You just look like an interested person.
Well, I am. Very pretty, isn't it? Who else?
I never do this. I must be slapstick or something. Yeah, I'm not shameless. All right, where are we on this agenda? We have market landing. Are we, and it's already formal now? Market landing park expansion. Andy, do you have any of your colleagues?
I do. Thank you. And I'm sorry, I'm wearing two hats here. In this case, I'm not in the project manager for the market landing park project. So I'm presenting this with some folks that we have from Sasaki. I just wanted to announce them and if they could just introduce themselves. Actually, Maren, Maren, do you want to just give around a introduction for your team and I could just, you do that?
Sure. My name is Maren Braco. I'm a landscape architect and project manager at Sasaki. And today I have with me Dan Dwyer, who's the architect working on the visitor center. Mark Dawson is principal in charge. Jamie Valet is our civil engineer and Stephanie Kuhl is our consultant from VHB working on permitting.
May I interrupt for one moment and a under procedural question? We're having so much trouble hearing. The next meeting, our second meeting in August is when we're supposed to do a completion completeness vote on the application. Could we combine that with the informal? I know it's, I may push things out a little, but I don't know how we're going to hear her or any of them.
Well, again, I don't know how to speak to the owl issues because those are, they come and go or it works and then all of a sudden it doesn't. You know, we've had two times now it hasn't come. The part of the reason, it's a long story. It's hard to explain, but as project managers, one of the things that Jordan and I, for those of you know Jordy. One of the things we have to deal with is the costly, there's a million different moving pieces that have to be juggled. And so when we push out the informal, we have to push out the finalization of plans. You know, materials are being presented because we don't know whether or not things are going to be changing, whether or not there's any substantive input that might modify those things. There's been a fair amount of development. One of the things we're going to review with you is a fair amount of development of the plans already working very closely with the city council and their ad hoc committee. But if we push that out, it, it can create, well, it is possible, it can push, it can create other problems, costs, timeframe delays and things like that.
There's no way you can get the volume up if the volume is connected to the owl?
Yeah, no, sorry. That, that's actually the problem. The owl is not functioning right now. So. Yeah. So again, I, I have been trying to place my microphone against the laptop. Again, this is with the best equipment we have in this room here, putting the microphone against the laptop. If folks in here speak loud and Maren, if you and your team can speak loudly, it may be possible for folks to hear you better. We apparently are having a problem with the owl, so I'm going to put the microphone against my laptop computer. If you could all speak very loudly, that would be helpful.
I'll do my best.
Okay, so go right ahead if you'd like. Do you want me to give a word of introduction or do, are you ready to?
Sure, you can introduce.
Okay, so just a couple of things. Market landing park, I guess some of you are familiar with the design process already. And just maybe just by show of hands, maybe who's familiar generally with the. Okay, so this project's been underway for a while. I'm not going to go through this diagram in great detail, but we've used this several times during presentations. We've gone all the way from an inventory of the site. Now the city council has appropriated funds for Sasaki to do the full design, ready for bid. Our plan at this point is to do bidding over the winter, just to give you a sense of timeframe. Bidding over the, the fall and winter season to have construction start in the spring. This is all very much dependent on, on the funds that the city council has recently decided to appropriate for the project, including CPA funds. We also have some funds from the trust fund commissioners and we're waiting a grant from the state, although we, we think we're hopeful we'll be successful in that one. We've had some good exchanges with the grant administrator. We do think we'll get those funds and that would allow us to start construction in the spring. However, because the funds are limited, we're looking to phase that and that's an important part of, of what we're doing here is to create the park features first. That's our priority. So we've gone from this concept and schematic design process, working with the city council and the ad hoc committee. That was designated specifically for this when the redevelopment authority was dissolved. The part of that process and part of that formal agreement going forward with the city council was in order to establish this ad hoc committee. And so the ad hoc committee has been reviewing and approving the overall scheme of development here for this park expansion. Things like the, the number of parking spaces left over, how much, you know, park space where it goes, working with Sasaki. And so Sasaki has been preparing those plans and what you're seeing here tonight is based on all that work. So you can see that we're basically at this, in this, we've just received 75% plans of a few weeks back from Sasaki. We've been reviewing those internally and so you're going to see some of those plans tonight. We'll be able to zoom in a little bit on that, but we're here to give you an overview of the park itself. So that prior to permitting, starting up formally in August and certainly prior to our having 100% plans ready for bid. We want to make sure that everything addresses the planning board's concerns too, because in this case you're reviewing both the site layout and the new building, although it's a relatively small structure. The downtown overlay district requires the planning board to review new architecture in the downtown as well. So that being the case, you have both the site planner approval for the project and the DOD special permit for the restroom visitor facility. And we need to incorporate any adjustments that might be necessary here in the plans that are submitted to the board. And approved also obviously at the end and obviously to our bid documents. We're hopeful that we've done enough work thus far that the world we need drastic changes or, or concerns from this end only because we've received a fair amount of direction from the city council thus far. That being the case, we're, this is where we are in our process. This is the proposed plan. I think you're, you're probably generally familiar with this. It's not inconsistent with what you've seen. If you've been here for a while, you've seen other plans for the central waterfront. It's relatively consistent in terms of having park space expand out from the central embayment. So we've got the wings of the park where we're referring to as the east and west wings. And then we have the, the remaining parking areas. You can see on the west side, a much smaller lot, sort of, you know, half size of what's there today. And the east side, again, shrinking further, you, you may know if you've been out there that we've, 2019 or so. We created some temporary lawn spaces to make those spaces useful to folks in the interim timeframe. That unfortunately, the pandemic came around and it made that, negated a bit of that, but, but that space is going to be used actually for the, my understanding is the city council, when I was looking at the shanties. Again, for temporary use in that lawn space going for the part of the season. So using those spaces temporarily and so where the, the west embayment plaza label is there and the fairwar plaza. We've got some temporary lawn space there and so we're basically expanding those wings further, taking the parking away from those areas. So to review the scope of the project with you tonight and just to see any concerns you have. Behind the berm, so we have the boardwalk there, right? And we're expanding behind the berm, adding some fill to raise these lawn spaces so that folks will have a similar vantage point to what they have when they're on top of the berm. We've also incorporated this indigenous people's place in the, in this little lawn space here. It's close to the sculpture park. One of the directions that we got from the city council because of the budget and what's available for funding, or it's made available for funding right now for this project. We have been asked to try to raise funds for some of the site elements. So for instance, the site sculptures or the indigenous people's place sculpture, for instance, those may be donations or funding at least donated for that. What we're trying to do here is the primary park component. So most important to us in this 100% set of plans and the first phase of construction in the spring, although we're looking for approval of the whole project. The first phase would be the walkways, the shared use path, the grading and so forth. We might, depending on the funding sources that come in, add into our bid or into a later work next year even, the sculptural elements and things like that. The, the benches even, we're looking for donations on that, possibly the tree row here that you see near the harbor master entry. So we're maintaining that access, but, but it's possible that some of these elements will be, will be partly fundraised in addition to the base work that we're paying for it. But that being the case, we're, we're, you can see here, we're creating a new central wharf way that goes out to Merrimack Street. This is where that pop-up park or the seashells that the NRA put together some years ago has been, that area would be replaced, not in the initial phase next year. We do have to remove for this product and the new pedestrian way that's being created. We do have to remove the turret, the restroom trailer and the shed that's there, the visitor booth. The expectation is to have potentially interim facilities, not necessarily relocating the trailer that's there to the seashell area. So this, this area may stay sort of a passive park space with some sort of, you know, elements of the seashell space. Maybe refine a little bit, you know, working on that area, but in essence, this, this visitor building would not be completed next, next year necessarily. We would be doing the walkway that extends out to Merrimack Street here. We would be doing the shared use path or bikeway connection east and west across the site through the central payment. The, the names are renamed, the ways are renamed, by the way, so upper and lower railroad. For those of you who heard from other ways, that's why this one is being labeled central wharf way. And we had had discussions and agreement with the waterfront trust and sellers about, about that, that aspect of the project. We also are very importantly here, trying to finish one of the legal obligations for the central waterfront, which is the completion of fair wharf way as a pedestrian access to the water's edge. So that would be another pedestrian way built next to the east lot, which is again shrunk in size primarily by the reduction here. You see by the water, that whole area would be turned into park space and parking would be pushed back here. We may have an interim condition in which there's a few more spaces squeezed in only because we may not be doing the parking areas next year. Right now there's not funding to do all the paving and curving and so forth in there. So we will do as best we can with the budget to landscape and screen along the edges there and we're refining those transitional areas right now. But in essence, we're looking to complete the pedestrian ways and those primary public park spaces. And then look to future phases to, and funding to finish the remainder of it, but to do as best we can with the budget that's made, made available to us. There are a couple of design principles and I don't, Maren, if, if you wanted to speak to these at all, but this is coming from Sasaki. Some of the important things that Sasaki is trying to incorporate, right?
Sure, I can take it from here. Thank you for that introduction. Can everyone hear me okay?
As loud as you can.
So these are principles we developed during the concept and schematic phase, coming out of community engagement and our work with the city. So we want to develop program that creates an active and inclusive year-round destination for the park. Keep the character of Newburyport and the waterfront. Promote connectivity between the water and downtown and from environmental perspective, build a landscape that's resilient and sustainable. And so we just have a few eye level views. Go ahead.
Oh, no, no, Maren, I was going to offer if it's okay with you, you know, to step on your toes. It might be helpful because they, they might be having an easier time hearing me. That's right. I might review these if that's okay. Okay, sorry. Just, just because it might be easier. These are some vantage points, excellent advantage points that Sasaki has made for the project. Obviously, you know, these things get refined as we go along, but this is meant to show as you're looking from the central embayment area, looking east. Through that, you'll see that lawn space here behind the berm that's being created. The pedestrian walkway is being cut through the, the granite there. There will be an opening where there currently isn't one. We often remove electrical transformers and other equipment back here to do that. And then there'll be a, some steps leading up to some raised swing elements. And we have some more graphics for that, but this will be, you think, a very nice seating area for folks. We're also looking for some fundraising for those elements, those above ground elements as requested by the council. But those will be a series of 12 to 16 of these swings that folks can sit on with, with sort of an architectural element, kind of like the pergola you saw earlier tonight. This is a view down for a wharf way through the middle of that. So you see the structure on both sides. And again, the, the structure might be a slight variation on this, but this is to give you an idea of what that experience would be like. Behind that, by the way, you can see the shared use path crossing through the raised lawn space and behind that where the swing sets are. This is actually looking from where the sculpture park is today or on the west parking lot, closer to where the waterfront trust lot is. So looking towards the embayment, you can see this is, there's a little bit of a widened into area right here. There's some bike racks. And there's a sculpture that will be, our plan is to have a ship. And there's a sculpture that will be, our plaintiffs have a shipbuilding sculpture of some sort here, although we haven't worked out the details of that. And based on funding, that may be an element that's fundraised outside the city as opposed to paid for by the city. But that, that will be a shipbuilding sculpture to go with some interpretive panels that we have planned for the project as well. To cover things like urban renewal, the history of marketing at the park. You know, even going back to indigenous times of the Native, Native Americans and so forth. This is a viewpoint from the, the raised lawn space behind the berm. So you're, really, you're looking at the central embayment is over here on your right and then your left is just the Merrimack River. This is a, an area we've had to do some work recently on. We've spent a fair amount of time early this year with the city council and its ad hoc committee on this. So we have, this is relatively recently, we've been able to refine this. This is the area by Merrimack Street where the new facility will go. The, the trailer facility is about here, the shed, maybe sort of up there. We're putting a pedestrian walkway in there, so that new structure would not be able to stay there. For those of you who've been following the project, we had a, had a fair amount of debate over the placement of the building, its design and its programming. And so just to review a part of that, because it's important background for you to have, knowing where the city council has directed where, where this plan is now for the most part. The building footprint was originally shown here, roughly here by Sasaki. The city council, I think in response to comments from the waterfront trust and some of the settlers and cows. Had requested that we move this structure further to the west, and so it was in this sort of lawn space here, closer to Summerby's Way. We were trying to be responsive to the council's request to essentially preserve as much of a few shed, so to speak, to the water's edge. The assumption there was that a more narrow building would be preferable for that purpose. So Sasaki has obviously modified the building to be more narrow and more linear perpendicular to the river. That dictates, dictates some other things too, like the solar panel array alignment on the roof. But in doing so, when we shifted that to try to respond to the council's concerns. It was determined that the, the building, corner of the building anyway, would end up being in the flood zone and take into account future sea level rise. We did not want to be placing the building in a location like that, and so we had some concern raised about that placement. But also the cost associated with that placement, because there's fill that has to be added. So in doing that and having that conversation, we ultimately got feedback from the council relatively recently to move the building back to the side over here. And so the building has basically shifted back, but the council did provide feedback to us after a fair amount of discussion and debate. And the programming of the restrooms, there was some discussion early this year about whether or not to have a gender neutral restroom setup. That was ultimately rejected. The, the state was applied to for variance under the plumbing code. That was not approved. Again, just as background for you, and so what result, the reason why that's important is because when we came back to the city council. Instead of having your standard sort of restroom setup, where you have a male and female set of rooms and a common vestibule. The council has said to us, rather than reverting back to that as the norm, rather than having one gender neutral large restroom setup. And going back to the norm of just male and female restrooms, you know, collective, to actually have individual stalls for every restroom. So that's the reason why, as you look at this plan here, we can show you the interior. But that's why this building is very linear and that's why this building has a bunch of doors on the outside facing outside. Is because on each of the sides. Not, you know, it's not necessarily the thing that we normally think to do here, but, but that was the request there, was to have these stalls be individuals. And I think that was partly to deal with the influx of, of folks that might need to use the restrooms and alternating between male and female and the lines that can sometimes pile up. Having as much flexibility as possible while also having the individual have comfort level with whoever might be in their own restroom. So that being the case, I know people could take their kids in there and so forth. So that being the case, we were asked to have individual stalls, which is this long portion of the building back here. The front portion is actually the, the visitor booth space that would be staffed at least seasonally. And then you see some outdoor seating areas. More recently, we've been having discussions and working out the access, so accessible ramps leading up to the site, staircase here. Working with the ADA coordinator and others, working to, to determine what the best alignment is for some of these things. But it's important for you, I think, just to understand why, where we've come to in terms of the, the building, where it is right now in the design. The council also had suggested that we use a wood siding for the building in addition to that. So that's another reason why you see here, for instance, the wood collaborated panel siding rather than a brick exterior. Maren, did you and your team want to offer anything else or Dan here before I move to the next slide?
Glad you covered it.
Okay, thank you. So this, you have here sections and we saw the, the lines for those sections here on the plan. But these sections here are showing, you can see on the top one, section A is really the Merrimack Street view. So you're gonna see the short base of the building if you're standing directly across the street where the, where so-called unicorn street is or the green street parking lot. You'd see the space of the building with the glass. That's the visitor booth space. You know, we're working, this, the, the plans are being developed further, so our schematic plan here. We've been updating our renderings to match the site plan, so as far as the plaza placement, the building placement. The, this is showing the elevation of the building on one of the sides here. You can see the door is facing out, there's wood panel siding matching the rest of the building. This is recessed a bit, so there's a bit of an overhang there in the roof. For those are just outside the door. And there's an overhang on the building just out front that's provided a little bit of shade during the summer months. And then behind this sort of raised parapet is, is the solar panels. And there's, one of the difficult things about a project like this is there are a number of different competing interests and requests. And one of the requests here amongst all the others, we've been given guidance on, and sometimes gone back and forth over like the building footprint. Is, is that there's a city ordinance that requires us to try to do net zero energy for buildings. So one of the difficult things here, been here is, is as we shift the building location, is just making sure we have enough solar panels. You know, the best alignment we can in this building to try to make it net zero. So up there behind the parapet wall are some solar panels to get as much sunlight as possible to offset. And we do believe that this relatively small facility will be able to be net zero. Whereas for instance, the cutter fire station project that Jordy's working on, we don't expect to be able to fully cover the building with that. Although we do think we can cover a fair amount of ground with solar there. Whereas this one, because it's relatively small and relatively light load, should be able to be done. These renderings, again, are, have not been updated to show the, the shifting or alternating during the plaza space and the building. But what you can see here is the, the visitor building, the glass vestibule space for the visitor booth up front and then the restroom doors behind. There, we're doing the best we can to screen it with landscaping. We have the seating space. This is the new pedestrian walkway in front of that. The, this is approximately the location that exists in crosswalk, so you see this sort of period lighting. This is Merrimack Street. The bronze wharf area is just off to the left or to the rear there. This view is again, if you imagine the building shifting down a little bit and the plaza shifting, again, we haven't had a chance to update the rendering since the new guidance. And development of the plans. But this shows the building exterior. You can see the lobby space there for the visitor booth. And the, the doors there, screened apart by some, some vegetation. That's Summerby's Way, the pedestrian way, there's a landscape buffer and some pedestrian access that will be provided. And again, Merrimack Street is on the right side there with some landscaping part of the building as well. And on this plan, this is really the same sketch layout you'd seen previously, but just to show you a bit of why we were moving the building away from that corner there, the, the theme zone. Something we're doing here for resiliency is, we've had some discussions with key reps from the resiliency committee. Including Jay and Healy, the chair, Julie Gofferson, I see myself, and John Eric White, the city engineer. And a few others, and we've come to agree that it makes sense to start with a sort of a fifteen point three three foot elevation for this building. To keep it above a projected sealable rise. And we know we have some of the consultant team who may want to speak to this further, or if you have questions about this, can speak to us further. But to bring this building up as far as we think we reasonably could do without creating a great deal of grading issues right by Merrimack Street. And a bunch of switchback ramps. So, so it was agreement that that was a reasonable height to bring it to. And then we're glad that the building is shifting back this direction. That makes it easier to accomplish that, that height. Without a significant amount of filler grading. But moving it here up by the street. You then see that what we have in the building, although it's not shown on this plan, what we've worked out is that this building will be designed such that in the future, we can. Throw some eye beams underneath it and raise it even further, if it's determined that the building needs to be raised in the future and we're still, you know, deciding we're gonna, you know, salvage use that building at that point. We'll be able to raise it further in the future if we need to for that purpose. So we had some discussions not too, not too long ago with the city engineer walking through some of the details on that. So there's a, generally speaking, at least for those key stakeholders that have been involved, there's agreement that we're doing what we can here with, with respect to the structure. And bringing that as close as we can to Merrimack Street, as high as we can, without creating an awkward sort of situation for the coming decades. With respect to ADA ramps or excessive amounts of construction of, you know, concrete walls and railings and so forth. But the ramps that you see here would be provided for accessibility purposes. And again, I, Maren and the rest of your team, I just want to offer, is there's anything you wanted to offer here that I missed?
Very thorough, Andy.
So with that, we wanted to open it up for any questions you might have for us. Obviously, our goal is to come back to you with plans that, you know, address any of the concerns that you have. And we do have an aerial photograph, of course, to compare against the existing conditions, you know, for instance, the interim lawn spaces are there. So if you have any questions in context. With that, I guess I turn it over to the chair.
So I guess. I have two concerns, two sets of concerns. The one concern that I have expressed before has to do with the alignment of the shared use path. And particularly, it seems to me that you're eliminating any possibility of a shared use path across the site. Because as I understand it, what we've told in the past, the shared use path is gonna end in the bay. There's not gonna be a shared use path going across the bay. So I'm really concerned about that, because that was something that. Years ago, we were told was gonna happen, we were gonna continue a shared use path for the downtown. So I'm very concerned about that. That may be a showstopper for beyond together. The other part of that is running the shared use path into the sidewalk between the parking for Tuscan. See, whatever it is, and the restaurant itself. That seems like a really stupid thing to do, because that's a really narrow sidewalk, it's crowded. And it just doesn't make sense to me to do it. It seems like this plan presumes that Tuscan's gonna go away. And something else is gonna, is gonna be redeveloped somehow. We just don't know that's gonna happen. So those are my two concerns about the shared use path. My other concern is about the visitor center and restrooms. So I don't think the design will all fit into the downtown overlay. I think the real problem is proving that special permit. I think the idea of. Bathroom stalls would have been into his outdoor seating area is very unpleasant. I don't think I would ever want to sit in that plaza the way the building is designed right now. I really think that, I understand what your constraints are. I don't get why, why there's a concern about the orientation of that building. Preserving a viewpoint, because a viewpoint is only a view from a park. Across the street. So, so I, I do, I, I understand this is an issue that raises the city council. I don't get it, I don't agree with it, and I just think that visitor centered restroom facility is gonna have to change. So I guess what I would suggest is that we pull out of this, this, this equitable process, we can come back to that later. I just, I don't want to hold up everything, but I'm afraid that it would be. It's just too, too awkward and it doesn't rise to the quality that we should have in the downtown. Might ensure some improvement up the trail. So I guess, you know, that's a pretty strong statement, but I'm sticking with it.
Did you, did you want me to respond to any of those as we go along, or how do you wanna handle that?
Make notes and do it all at once. All right, I'm gonna, Richard, I'll get to you in a moment. We're gonna finish with that in the room first. Hang on. Open?
Yeah, I want a second Rick's concern about the shared use path. I first looked at this and said, okay, we're gonna share the boardwalk area in front of the embayment. There's gonna be a painted line, that's gonna kind of stay off the shared use path sign and so forth, so that I can ride my bike quite through there. But it sounds like from what Rick said, that that's not the plan, so that is a concern for me. I just want a second that. I had a couple of questions, just looking at the proposed plan, and just to clarify, the east and west wings of the embayment. You talk about having fills raising the level there to the height of the berm. Second, is that all the way across, is that the plan?
There's a little bit of variation there, for instance, the indigenous people's place, they're always gonna have a carve out there, right? So and there's some topography obviously sloping down to the shared use paths, so.
The second, second thing in the proposed plan, there's, there is a walkway, pathway between the stage and the firehouse. In the, in the current world, and then on the proposed plan, that's not there anymore. Is that going to be removed, is that?
Yes, apologies. That's actually on a previous, I don't know why it's missing here, on the previous rendering, we had had that. Got removed for some reason, it got added back in. We were not proposing to remove that walkway. The waterfront trust is expecting that to stay and that would remain in place. Apparently, it's just not rendered here. Apologies for that.
And then I do have some concerns similar to Rick with the restroom stall opening up and seating. That does, that does seem very awkward to me. I don't know if there's any options for having a central hallway. Such that they open up inside instead of on the outside, with that maybe more plumbing. But it would seem a more pleasant environment for seating and things.
I absolutely agree with what you said. I didn't have a solution, but I agree with Rick. I have big and separate bathrooms, and that's very important. Okay, and here's a question about the rendition of the visitor center. Is that exterior rendition accurate to what you're opposing?
I'm sorry, that was.
Very modern plumbing, is that, that accurate to what, what you're opposing, the exterior visitor center?
When you say you were, well, Sasaki has provided a design, the city council had asked for a wood exterior as opposed to a brick siding. Sided exterior. You know, the, the council, I don't know that they really provided a lot of specificity per se. But they were looking for something a little bit more akin to the harbor master facility rather than something like, you know. Yeah, and I, I would defer, I don't know if Dan Dwyer wanted to add anything from the Sasaki, but that's what they were thinking, you know, when they came back with the rendering.
It's, yes, I admit it's tough to hear the questions, but it's, I think the question.
Question about the, the panel siding versus say, clavred siding, like the harbor master facility?
Yeah, it is meant to be clavred siding. It's, it's wood clavred siding, horizontal boards, cedar. And right now, we're thinking that it would be a left natural, so they're gray out, like a, like a. Bill, I think the harbor master is also unfinished. The harbor master, I believe, is cedar shingle. We were looking at clavred, or I'm, uh, clavred board siding. You know, and one, you know, some of the. You know, some of the influences in making this small building that would not detract from the historic character of Newbury Port and Market Square. We're not, we weren't trying to mimic, say, buildings nearby, but we were, you know, sort of keen to be influenced by. Sort of the unpretentious nature of the federal style, which is very common all over Newbury Port. And so, you know, this building with the rhythms, we, we understand the challenge of, of the doors on the outside. And maybe then we can look at adding a colonnade or some sort of screen wall or even vegetation to maybe limit the view. To those doors, but you know, sort of the rhythm of those, these openings. Again, sort of akin to federal style buildings and the de-emphasis on the roof. But, you know, we're, we need to do a flat roof to get our solar panels on there too, and here it's our net zero initiative. But it does, again, federal style buildings kind of de-emphasize the roof line and so you don't necessarily notice a pitch. The pitch on the roof, but there's usually a, the roof is set back. And so the flat roof may be something that's, say, seen as modern, but it's, it is sort of akin to some federal style buildings. There's also, you know, the, the orientation of the building being a linear perpendicular to the, mark to Merrimack Street. Again, is in line with how buildings were set, the, the wharf buildings, the long wharf buildings that were set in that same direction. Also helps sort of guide the way we thought about this building. And the extended canopy on that south. We saw some original images of. Market House that had sort of a stiff canopy, instead of a cloth canopy, a stiff canopy along the, that south face. To, to shade the glass, the, the glass on the south face of the building. We also tried to put a lot of glass on that around the three sides of the, the um um, visitor center, so as to be very transparent and more storefront-like. Um, and then the doors, the, the doors to the bathrooms are recessed back a few feet, about three feet from the face of the um, uh, the sidewall of the visitor center. So it's, again, trying to sort of de-emphasize the bathrooms, but, and emphasize the visitor center on the south-facing Merrimack Street.
Thanks, Dan.
Richard?
So I just wanted to chime in specifically about the visitor center and the architecture and its look and throw a contrast to my fellow commissioner or planning board member uh, concern. It's in schematic design. I personally think it's appropriate that it not try to mimic brick or be kitsch, if you will, to specific of our uh, historic nineteenth-century architecture and welcome the contrast. It also helps differentiate itself as a new building versus an old building. And so I would just argue to allow the designers to work through the programmatic issues and the concerns raised about the exterior doors to the, the bathroom stalls, but to not abandon the look of the facility having of remnants or a nod, if you will, to historic federal architecture, but not to try to mimic it and water it down. I think it's a refreshing change to actually introduce something different. And by way of contrast, it differentiates itself from retail and housing and supports the fact that this is a unique public-programmed building.
Thank you. Um, does anyone else want to speak?
Bob has his hand up, Bonnie.
That's about to start speaking here and then we'll go to Bob.
Um, I just wanted to echo the concerns about the shared use path. Um, and then with respect to bathrooms, um, I understand why they are the way that they're proposed. Um, and I do think the single stalls are a good idea. Um, I would, I go, I think somebody just mentioned some screening. Um, I wonder if there is something that could be done to sort of just separate the bathroom area from the um, seating area. Um, you know, screening with some sort of mural or sculpture, something to that effect to separate those two areas.
Okay, Bob, you're on.
Thanks.
Well, go right ahead if you'd like.
Okay, sorry. Little trouble hearing. I would, I would echo Richard's comments about the, the visitor center. I, 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 I think the, where I am right now, where they're, with, with the current design is I, I, I don't think you're there yet. Uh, what, what I heard from Mr. Dwyer is, is, you know, a, all of the right intentions. Uh, referencing materials of the waterfront, referencing uh, a, a little bit of the character of Newburyport. I wouldn't get too hung up on the Federalist's uh, references for a building of this scale. I, I kind of think the, the harbor master's structure, which uses traditional materials in, in a more contemporary way is, is something you could look at as well. I also think that the glass and the mullions and, you know, all of that are not feeling quite right just yet uh, in terms of the, the storefront system. And, and I would echo all the comments about, about screening the, the entrances to the, the toilets themselves. Andy, if you could put the site plan back up again? I had, I had a couple of questions about the site plan, most, mostly having to do with the parking. And, you know, it, it appears the existing lot, uh, which is to the right-hand side of the plan, very logical layout. I, I, I guess I would like to understand how that is screened from, from the landscape area. But the layout is very logical uh, with, with that lot. I, comparing that to the, the lot down by the Black Cow, uh, it's a little bit difficult in this drawing to understand exactly how circulation works. But, but it seems like the circulation in and through the west lot uh, is, is a little bit difficult, particularly the water side of that lot, if that's actually an exit. So that, I mean, parking lots to me need, need to be very simple in their geometries. And, and the more complex they become, the more there's potential for issues with people parking. And this one seems a, a little bit difficult, particularly on the water uh, side of the lot. And I don't understand, or are we saying now that, that if I were to drive uh, through to the Tuscan Sea Grill, am I just going straight, uh, straight through now? And, and not kind of bearing to the, the right as you drive through it? It's not clear how circulation works if you were to drive all the way to the waterfront directly uh, and then take a left-hand turn in front of the Tuscan Sea Grill. So maybe you could clarify that uh, a little bit as well.
Yeah. Well, if I could, just to clarify that for you and the other members, I, part of it might be, uh, unfortunately, we're not showing in a line type the uh, existing waterfront trust or Riverside Park parking lot layout, but that um, we perhaps add that to uh, renderings for our formal presentation. Um, you know, when we get there, but um, that layout is not changing really. So uh, in effect, uh, if you're traveling through there and I'm trying to use these tools here, but-
So you do go to the right. Okay.
Be becoming, you know, down here as you normally do, uh, the uh, west, so the, the waterfront trust lot is really not changing for the most part, right? So uh, in reality, it's really just the bottom that's changing. Um, the reality is that the waterfront trust, other than that, you know, we remember that walkway that was put in front of the, the new Black Cow. Um, you know, since then, nothing new is really being added there. Uh, the driveway that goes in here uh, is essentially the same in terms of being able to get in there. But this would be a one-way out uh, down here, entering back into the usual cycle where the waterfront trust lot cycles around like this. Um, so in this, this case, you'd be coming out here and flowing with bad traffic. Uh, the waterfront trusted one, it knows in spaces down here, and so that's why those are shown here. Um, uh, so I don't know if that helps at all with, with that.
It, it does. There's just seems like there's a lot going on, right, right in that area that you were just pointing to. But I understand a little bit of the background of that now. Um, one, just one last question uh, relative to year-round use of, of the waterfront. Um, I know there were some comments early on when, when this was, you know, you were soliciting public comments uh, about the working waterfront and, you know, what happens to docks and dock storage and all of that in, in the wintertime. Uh, can, can you just address that also? Is that?
Yeah, that's a great question. Uh, we didn't go into uh, you know, a great detail here on this particular area, although we do have some slides of this we can show for the uh, your coming presentation. But um, the docks are generally stored here right now, and the harbor master basically uses a crane to, I think you already know this, but um, maybe others don't. He reaches over with a crane here to grab them and when the, the gangways put in there. Uh, we work with the harbor master and this plan will basically have a shifting of the point that he's putting everything in uh, down here. So he'll be storing the docks here. We've sized the area to make sure that he can do that. Um, the crane would essentially reach from here and you'd have a new gangway. We're going to basically weld a new uh, you know, platform for him to just extend his gangways up of there.
Okay, thank you. And I just, could, could you address the landscape screening at the, uh, at the east lot?
Yeah.
How is that screened from the, the park itself?
Yeah, so I'm going to zoom into that area a little bit, and then I'm going to switch to um, and, and if Marin and her team want to speak to it all, that's fine. Um, the um, the landscape plan or the black and white line drawings that show this area. Um, one of the things we haven't quite figured out yet, and then I don't know where Sasaki is with this, we can, we can discuss more. But they're looking at this transitional area right here because uh, what was recommended by the community preservation committee earlier this year and what was appropriated by the city council was not enough to do the parking areas as well or all the landscaping necessarily that goes with that. Um, we're doing the best we can to work within budget and to still um, start construction next year uh, for the park areas. But that would mean some transitional areas here. We may have uh, grading that's coming down uh, with um, with perhaps less landscaping, you know, maybe there. So I'm going to switch to the black and white line drawing there, but uh, you can kind of get a sense of the screening we're trying to place around that parking area. And um, while I pull it up, does uh, Marin, I don't know if you or any of your team want to speak to that any further?
Sure. So in that area, we have proposed a buffer planting, so there'll be mix of deciduous and evergreen trees and sort of uh, multi-layered planting so that uh, when you're on the shared use path, you don't get, you get the sense that you're in a park and not the sense that you're-
Sorry, Marin, could you just say that again?
Sure. So we're proposing a buffer planting here, so it's a mix of deciduous and evergreen uh, and multi-layered so that when you're on the shared use path, you get the sense that you're within the park and not next to the parking lot.
So the intention is to screen the parking lot from the other activities?
Correct.
That, that's really what I was asking. Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Um, could I just respond to one comment that Rick had made earlier? Oh, sorry. Yeah, sorry. It's just, there's a lot, there's a lot to uh-
I, I'm curious to know what the resiliency um, considerations are closer to the water. Um, and I know, I noticed that there were steps up from um, the, the boardwalk. And um, just add this to the list of things that are going to be responded to, but just to speak to um, how you, how the design will um, respond over time to the storm surge and sea level rise. Um, is the whole thing sacrificial at some point? I know it's talked about uh, the visitor center being somewhat raised, but I'd like to know what the elevations are. There are considerations for all the western parts.
Yep.
Um, and any considerations for, you mentioned the indigenous people's plaza might be um, I don't know, you call that lowered? Uh, is there some more, you know, that sort of might be able to contain some, some of the water? Um, so-
Yeah.
That whole business from, say, the shared use, use path at, to the water, I'm, I'm worrying here about.
Sure, yeah, and I would-
Back, you can respond to all the other questions as well.
Okay, so, so yeah, uh, I, we have Stephanie Quill here from BHBU who's been part of the, the team here uh, looking at the resiliency side and they worked with the conservation commission application, uh, because the commission has to approve this project as well. Um, so we've had a fair amount of discussion about resiliency and Stephanie may want to weigh in on this. Um, we're doing what we can to raise park areas and there are some diagrams we can provide in the, the full presentation to the board. We didn't include everything here. I'm not wanting to overwhelm you on the informal night. But um, there's been an attempt here to raise some park areas as best we can without having an excessive amount of film brought in. Um, because uh, future sea level rise does go out to, I think it's Rick, you know, off the market square, uh, you know, and the bull nose. Uh, so it, it's not, you know, we have, get up some debate as to how far out we're planning for and how much work we do uh, now versus the incoming uh, future decades. Um, the bulkhead wall project is in, uh, is uh, being raised, uh, that new project that we're hopefully going under construction this winter season, um, is actually going to be raised in height um, along the boardwalk area. And then we're raising some grades here. Uh, the building will be pushed as close as we can really to, to Merrimack Street. Um, Stephanie, do you want to speak to that further?
Yeah, sure. Um, so we used the kind of uh, brand-new modeling, the Massachusetts Coast Flood Risk Model. And we looked at fifty inches of sea level rise by 2070. We looked how the storm surge would come onto the site. Uh, and then we made some decisions about grading to try to reduce the uh, frequency of flooding on the site. Um, but you know, we, there are constraints. Um, again, that this particular project, as Andy mentioned, it doesn't directly address the bulkhead. We also have the waterfront trust property right through the center of the site. Um, making, you know, making that an area that needs to stay at its existing grade. So we were able to select a grading plan that provides some elevation, elevates the low points, ties back into the existing conditions around the property edges and still provides a good amount of protection um, for both tidal flooding and some of the, the storm surge that we expect to see. We've also uh, specified a, a planting schedule that uses coastal, uh, plants that are resilient to coastal conditions so that they can survive um, some occasional inundation in the future.
Um, as, as far as the shared use path alignment, uh, I mean, I, Rick probably knows this as well, but there was a fair amount of discussion. I was here for the, uh, as part of the bub, uh, you know, Andy and, and Bub Sidford, uh, sorry. Andy Sidford and Bob Hewig, uh, alignment planner, uh, schematic plan and the, the alignment of that path going close to the firehouse. Um, I actually at the time was, was partial to that alignment as well. Um, and you know, I sort of come to accept this is, is sort of what's expected here, given all the discussions that I've been privy to uh, thus far in this project and the design of it. Um, I appreciate the concerns. You're, you're correct that the expectation here is that the riders, or anybody who's riding a bike would get off and, and walk through that embayment area as opposed to riding through. Um, but we also know that informally, uh, and, you know, we, we were out there doing this shirt sort of charrette thing at tables out there. We had people who were biking through, you know, through that section, it does happen. So um, the expectation generally is that when there's a, you know, enough people there, people are going to be slowing down just because of, it won't be possible to ride through there. Um, but um, you know, beyond that, I appreciate the uh, the concern about that. I don't know uh, how much the city council or its ad hoc committee would be willing to revisit that issue. Uh, but uh, but we did spend a fair amount of time on that and it did actually go to this direction versus the uh, original alignment um, that the NRA was considering, which was uh, to have a curve back towards the firehouse and around the uh, central lawn space. It was a fair amount of debate about going through the uh, the top, the bottom, or even in that middle path that Alden had mentioned earlier. Um, and, and those were rejected in favor of this one.
So, so is that just a question?
Uh, can I ask one additional quick question?
No, no, wait, wait. Let's, maybe follow my, my-
Yeah, so Rick's going to follow up on just one thing.
I just feel like-
Yeah.
We're walking your bikes across the bay and it's crowded, it's hazardous. I think I'm going to run my bike into a little pit, you know, if I'm walking my bike. So I, I think, you know, that's a very, that's actually the densest fire of the entire park. And it's putting everybody there. I just think it's a, it's a traffic night.
Want to take a- Bob, you want to come back in again?
Yeah, I just had one, one totally unrelated question. You know, from time to time, when we have looked at this plan, uh, we've talked about program elements like food trucks and, you know, things that uh, you know, create a, a little bit more energy in the park in terms of the users. And I wondered if there is any discussion about that uh, and where they might be accommodated, if there is discussion about that. I'm just, just curious whether that's been talked about at all.
Yeah, Bob, uh, definitely, uh, that's a, a good point. There has been discussion about that and we didn't, unfortunately, I'm sorry, I didn't speak to this earlier. But um, I'm just going to zoom in here a little bit in this area here, and it's not really shown in, in lineup in this drawing. But um, but it actually might be shown better on the black and whites. Let me just shift to that. Yeah, so it might be a little hard to see here in the black and white that I'm showing you. Uh, but this is that area there, so uh, next to the east lot. Um, what we have done is essentially to try to provide some spots here, both for pickup and drop-off for some of those events, for some vehicles to park in this uh, area here next to, and sort of a landscape strip and then the walkway at the edge of the parking lot, as well as a um, a temporary lawn space. This is sort of a grass-paved type uh, um, element here, placed underneath the, the grass to help support uh, vehicles if they're placed there during the season. Um, you have some space for that. So that, that's kind of the general assumption is that would accommodate those types of things generally.
Good. Okay, okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, getting back to the distinction between the site plan pool and special permit. I think Richard was kind of suggesting that this was a design process, but when we approve a special permit, it's going to be a design. It's not going to be a design, it's not going to be a standard at that point. So you think that it makes sense to separate out the site- So you think that it makes sense to separate out the site plan from the special permit and to give more time to think about and consider the special permit process, where these things all have to happen together? That's the question, because we can't, we can't approve, we can't approve a schematic.
Yeah, understood.
It's going to be final design.
Yeah, I didn't, understood, yeah, and I and I appreciate the dilemma, you know, I look at it from both sides, really, in my capacity, I can see it from both sides. Um and there are some site integration uh aspects that have to be worked out now. So um you know, for instance, because of the proximity of Central Warf Way, so there, we, you know, if there was a general understanding or agreement relative to the building footprint and that was not necessarily changing, then it might be more easy to break out the building piece uh per se, but we're trying to make sure that the walkway connections and so forth are worked out at least sufficiently for the central warf way area. Um I don't know, I I'm gonna ask if the Sasaki team wants to weigh in here or anything that, but we have to have at least some level of detail in that area so that if we were to parse off, say, the building or the even the plaza area in the building uh and sort of try to treat that as a separate review or a later review. Um one, we're under contract with Sasaki to to finish the design this year uh and to have it ready for bid, even though we're not anticipating construction of that that piece of it, but because it has to be correctly designed uh done at once. Um but I don't know if the team wants to add any of that, I just want to make sure we do enough on the site in that area uh if we were to try to parse that off that we do not, you know, neglect the integration that would have to be done later after redo something. Merron, do you or your, or your team want to offer anything on that?
Uh I'll just point out that the, both the landscape and the architecture are um have submitted seventy-five percent construction documents and that's the design that we're reviewing now.
Right, so in the coming weeks or months, we're basically going from that seventy-five percent, we think of it as like a masto T set of plans, um going from the seventy-five percent to a hundred percent that would be bid ready. Um you know, some plans and specs, so um the black, what, black and white line drawings that you saw is just an excerpt of a stack of, you know, drawing sheets uh with um, you know, the materials, the plantings and so forth, you know, each of those drawing sheets are showing a different thing and there are tiled sheets for each because it's such a large site. Uh but um we have to refine those details enough that the package is ready in the coming months. Um each, each thing that we need to tweak here, and this is the difficult part with a with a project like this where there's a million different inputs, is each time there's a revision done to something that may not have been anticipated in the scope of work originally, um because again, because of budgetary constraints and what was expected coming from the council. Uh we might have to uh expend more time on the design, uh and spend more money on that and then push out certain features of it. So we would have to work those things in there, but the current timeline is to try to go from seventy-five percent, what we got a couple of weeks ago to a hundred percent planned in the coming weeks or months uh so that it is actually ready for uh bid, at least the park, you know, elements of it. And we don't want to leave um, you know, edges of it uh in a situation where we're trying to do something and then finding out we need to shift those things later on because of things that were excluded from the plan review now.
Then you basically want to hold them.
It's, it's definitely profitable to have at least as far as the site layout and if if if, you know, if there's some discussion about pushing the building design, maybe that'd be easier than the building footprint, I guess, in general, is what I would say. Uh beyond that, I don't know if if the Sasaki team want to offer anything else about trying to parse off the building or the plaza area separately in some way. Merron, did anyone in your team or is it, would I have covered that already?
Oh, I mean, I think w- we've been through, in the last couple of months, we had attempted to design the architecture sort of separately from the landscape earlier this year and saw those challenges and so I think we really see the benefit of it working together, uh given the um it's, it's like three or four feet of grade change um and meeting existing conditions that is, it may look simple on a plan, but the team has spent quite a bit of time trying to make sure that the all the considerations we've heard um from the architecture and landscape, balancing costs and resiliency measures and accessibility have all worked together. So um as Andy said, you know, some of the the details of the building could certainly be tweaked without having an impact on the landscape, but um I certainly advocate for trying to move these along together.
So what is, so as I understand, you're going to be coming with a complete set of plans, including a final design of the building for the August seventh meeting?
Correct, I currently, what you're seeing here, as far other than the renderings that show the building and the opposite location shows the plaza, this is the design of the building that we currently have coming out of where we have.
But but they actually be a design, this is just, this is like sketches and renderings now, respect to the.
Oh, you're black and, black and white elevations.
Elevations and, yeah, the materials, that's it. So you'll have all that by the seventeenth?
Yeah, we have an architectural set and it will be uh uploaded as well to to go along with the site plan. Um the, I I defer, uh Dan, you know, we may have some supplementary information or revisions to that uh to show, but basically you're looking at all intents and purposes. Those are just detailed plans showing the design that you just saw.
And so what is your timeline for getting both from the.
Um yeah, Merron, do you want to speak to that in terms of the schedule a little bit? I mean, backing out, of course, from when we're sort of expecting, we we need to go to bid basically this winter is from a project management perspective, we need to be able to go out to bid. Um but Sasaki's under a contract to try to get that package ready uh in enough time for us to take that and add it to our front end and do the whole procurement process, which also takes time.
Yeah, so we're uh currently going through um all of the permitting hearings that are needed and the applications between this month and the end of August. And our, our goal is to sort of hear all of the feedback and we've just received feedback also from the ad hoc committee on design, approvals, um cost estimate. Or take all of that and then make sure that it's embedded into the one hundred percent set. So between September and October, we'd be working on bringing the drawing set from seventy-five percent to a hundred percent. And then uh as Andy mentioned, going out to bid shortly after that.
Let me just qualify this. I'm coming to the meeting tonight and you said that the August seventh meeting was simply a completeness, application completeness vote. Does that mean, so what I'm hearing is the, the team thinks that they're going to be having a public hearing that night?
Yeah, I know, and sorry, just to clarify, when the August uh third meeting was canceled, uh the expectation was originally that a completeness vote would be taken on that date. So um so that may, you know, depending on if if you're having a concern about that, perhaps we're, we we might be pushing this hearing out, but um and that's obviously difficult for us, you know, from a project management perspective. But um we were originally anticipating the board looking at the completeness end on August third, but that meeting was canceled, so.
So um I don't know if you've ever done this before, um or do you remember, when you had a completeness?
We have done them on the same night.
And other than the public hearing after that?
We have, yeah.
Okay, so if all goes well and they bring all the materials that are listed for, you know, voting for the special permit, the site plan will be all of that is lined up and ready to go and we agree that it's complete application, then we could open the public hearing that night. So we could conceivably um post that as a public hearing as well as a completeness vote.
Correct, correct.
And if we find that it's not complete, we cannot open the public hearing.
Correct, right. We weren't, we would not have been expecting to close on one night anyway, so just to be clear.
Well, I think the development team needs to understand that. This could take well into two of the meetings. So I don't see, and and we also have another complication, um which I was going to discuss with you online, but I don't know if there's an easy answer to it. Um if the planning board comes up with significantly different um perspectives, opinions, whatever you want to call it, on the site plan and or the special permit to what has been discussed with other stakeholders and contingency council. Um is this gonna cause heartburn in the team because we are used to just going through the process and even that can take two or three nights? So I just want to raise um these concerns now. They are not insurmountable, but I'd like the development team to understand that, that we are in a much more complex situation here than normal. If we were just, if you were just coming to see us for these two applications, it could be two or three meetings with us. But if anything big comes up that we want in order to approve either the site plan or the special permit and your, your team or Andy on your behalf as a cycle back with one of the stakeholders, um that could really throw off your entire um expectation of going on this before the end of the year.
Yeah, I know, thanks, Chair, that's a good point. Uh so we, again, we had assumed several meetings with the planning board. Um you know, the, I think I would be less and I, you know, Sasaki may want to win this too, but I I would be less concerned about having several meetings with the planning board, obviously, I think that's pretty typical. Um you know, for a view of a project like this or a site, you know, this size. Um what would concern me more, just again, just looking at it from a project manager's perspective, is, like you said, the city council has given a fair amount of um, you know, direction relative to the visitor's center, for instance, that that use, that programming, the design of it. Um and so uh recognizing the planning board's authority and of the DOD, um that does potentially um, you know, result in some disagreement with the city council over what what that might be. And I think that comes perhaps less so to the design of the building, but more so to the fact that it increases costs, whether that be uh continued design work or the actual construction work, depending on, you know, what the nature of the changes are. Um there's been a fair amount of concern from them about things like cost, um you know, aspects of the design, and we've tried to be responsive to that as even that target has been moving over time. Um and Sasaki's had to modify the design or the location of the building, for instance, several times in response to those uh points of direction. So uh if we were to do that here or see that here, um that could, you know, require some further discussions with the the mayor, the city council in terms of the budget, um in terms of more timeframe being needed, more time for Sasaki to do work, um and and hopefully reach some sort of um consensus. Again, remember, we have nine planning board members and and opinions that might be there, uh plus eleven potential city council, uh you know, opinions. Uh never mind the news of the general public or other inputs that we might get.
How much of the park is in the downtown?
Uh the downtown only district doesn't encompass the uh the park, so.
Doesn't?
I don't believe it encompasses the park. Give me a second, I can pull up the map, but I don't.
So the, the quietest.
No, I'm sorry, I'm just referring to part of the park space, I think, is not within the DOD, yeah.
Are we clear that the visitor's center is the only thing that is within the DOD?
Uh I'm pretty sure that that's the case, but let me just double check for you.
The special permit is for DOD?
Uh correct, that's what the zoning administrator had determined was necessary and uh. So, oh, no, I'm mistaken, yeah, sorry, so the the whole waterfront is covered by the DOD, sorry, it was extended on the market.
Those, those structures, the pergolas and everything, they, you know, need special permits also?
I'm not sure that the zoning administrator did not determine those to be, and I don't, my recollection, again, a quick, quick thought of looking through the the DOD provisions, I don't believe that those trigger.
I thought that the fountain for the water, you know, for the institution fountain was in the DOD. Yeah, maybe I'm lying there.
I think that the institution fountain came before all that. Yeah, that came, that came uh many, almost eight years ago or maybe more.
At least, I'm just wondering, you know, I just want to make sure we don't, yes.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll double check on that and I'll also confirm with Jennifer, I heard that she brought agreement on whatever the interpretation is there, but um we'll, we'll double check just to be sure to your point.
And I guess, I guess the point I just wanted to make is it's a lot easier to get the site plan pool, you know, to be loaded and visit this special permit. So that's another reason, if there's any way to save kind of some aspect, so we don't have to deal with that in the tight time, you're not going to go with it anyway, in the first, if I could go.
Yeah, understood, yeah, I I guess again, my my major concern is just under, uh hoping that. Right.
If you can, if you can get to a certain point of the site plan with that, without having to, I mean, if you can't come to an, an design, that seems like it, it may be.
Yes, I understood, I understood, I'm just trying to pull you back to the fact that I I agree with, I think, and I understand exactly what you're saying. What the point I'm trying to make, I guess, is that the building footprint can be mod, depending on what you're asking for here and whether or not the council's willing to to change that essentially, because, you know, they've given some direction here. Um whether or not that changes could impact, say, the alignment of an accessible space, you know, uh walkway widths and so forth. So I would want to see, if we're trying to approve a site plan and not have problems that are resulting from that now or later on. Um you know, these aren't things necessarily this board will be dealing with, will be dealing with for a project management or cost perspective later on. So um I just want to make sure that whatever we're doing there, we're not running into a problem where um the building footprint is being drastically changed in some way that is just undoing. Uh so if we could work out the site details there, again, I I think there's definitely, you know, to your point, the potential ability here to break off, you know, in some way, that portion of the project and review. There's certainly been a fair amount of debate around that structure, way more maybe in recent time than the park. Uh but um and so perhaps there's a, it would make sense to uh to do that, I can, you know, circle back uh on that point with you um prior to uh, you know, August. Um but I would just, hopefully, we could work out the site details enough in that area that it would not generally have to modify. Maybe the building footprint's shifting a little bit at Plaza, but maybe the other details don't have to be modified, like ramps, you know, for accessibility and things like that.
Yeah, I think that's a really good point, if we can get as far in the site plan um with the footprint and the general outline of what's going to be in the visitor's center and then agree with the applicant that we put off the site plan, I mean, the special permit decision and get the site plan wrapped up. Um they can, they can move along, obviously, they're not, if they're gonna go out to bid, it's only going to be on the phases, the first phase anyway. So I think uh I wouldn't worry about all that right now, I'm glad we've had this conversation, because it sets everybody's expectation about how we want to move this as efficiently as possible forward and work together on it. Um but we know in the sun, we can already see where the stumbling blocks are going to be and if we can pull out a later phase stumbling block for a longer decision, then we'd be happy to work with the applicant to get the site plan approved and uh ready for the meeting.
Sure, so I will definitely circle back internally and we'll have Sasaki and the team here and I will have, having a meeting tomorrow morning anyway. So we're circle back on this particular point, understand the board's concern, um and obviously, we'll, perhaps we need to be some more coordination. Um Sherman, what might be acceptable here? We'd love any additional feedback you want to provide, any members want to provide us, you know, uh whether it's here in the meeting or you just want to give a call. Um any additional feedback would be helpful to us, regardless of the timeframe, you know, involved, if we are breaking that up. Uh certainly to get to the end result, whatever that design is that is uh acceptable to the boards.
I, I guess I'd just say, if the visitor's center is the only thing that requires a deal with the special permit, then you don't actually have to file an application right away. You could file that application in a couple of months when you get a good sense of what the site.
Yep.
Any other comments from any board members now? Because I think we've given you um, you know, the major concerns, the thing about, if other, other features may come off or other, maybe really significant things may come up as we look in detail at the site plan, but I think you've got what we want to say right now um to incorporate into the application.
Yeah, um I uh, I think I heard Merron say that you're talking about fifty inches of civil, you know, rise by twenty seventeen and I've always thought of forty, so is that, did I hear wrong?
Uh Stephanie, did you hear that?
Yeah, no, that's correct. We, we, uh I know that the Conservation Commission requires looking at forty, um but the more advanced data that we have actually models fifty.
Hey, that's great, and so one thing I would request, if it's possible, when you submit the plans, is to have an exhibit, a plan that shows perhaps the areas that are below and above the um the twelve feet plus fifty inches. Um because as I read the plans, I don't, I don't see that, as I'm reading the sketch, um it seems like there are rooms that are above, perhaps above, but maybe the layers are below. And I just want to get a sense of when the areas are that are going to be underwater, when we have that one percent five point seven.
Rick, uh just in for Stephanie's benefit and the the Sasaki BHB team here, um would it be, I know that we've done some in prior presentations and we have some slides to this, there are actually color illustrations of that. I'm wondering if that is actually even uh more useful than, say, a black and white line drawing, does that, does that work? Uh because I, Stephanie and then the team, I think, have had some good renderings uh to show the sealable rise and what areas were captured at different points. And um Stephanie, does that, and Merron, does that make sense?
Sure, um we, we can provide images um that are outputs of that model. What we don't have in there, though, is the exist, or sorry, the proposed grading overlaid with those plans. Um so we'll probably, you know, we can create a compilation of different images to, to um help clarify the degree to which the the site will be protected.
So perhaps I'm misunderstanding, because I I I'm recalling some renderings that are um showing those areas, but it was based on um, at least at that point, the grade, the grading as we knew it. Am I misunderstanding something here?
I don't know, yeah, may, maybe, maybe we can um, we can. I don't know, yeah, may, maybe, maybe we can, we can figure that out with the team offline.
Sure, yeah, it would take me a moment to pull up one of the renderings. But I, I think we have, or had developed some of those, we can follow up on that tomorrow. But certainly understand what the, the need is.
You've got the grading, and you're going to have the contour line.
Yeah.
We've just been drawing, you know, tracing that contour line.
Yeah. Yes. Okay, so in addition to anything we do in color for the rendering side of it, if we could show maybe on a plan sheet, show that line type running through the site, sort of a clear distinction, I guess. And Rick, is it acceptable or clear enough if we use one drawing sheet for that as opposed to the four tiles? Just because a lot of the planning sheets you're going to be seeing are in four tiles based on the site, so, okay. Does that make sense for the Stephanie and Aaron?
Yes.
Okay, well, thanks to the planning board for your time. I definitely appreciate tonight in advance of the hearing, and we'll follow up on the DOD end. And, and obviously, the site plan will be before you regardless.
Okay, great, thank you.
And thanks, everybody from Sasaki and BHB for being here tonight.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Clarify this one here, because it's incorrect. 5/4/22, there was no recording. And so for my minutes, I grew up some, my notes, I grew up some minutes, which I'll send to everybody tomorrow, the review on August 17. 5/18, we've already been done, and we've approved them. And so that leaves us with 6/15, 6/22, and 7/6. And they are all ready for review. Does anyone have a problem if I take them all together?
I need to abstain from the 6/22.
If you weren't there, I'll ask you to abstain. Now keep, try to keep track of all of it. Yeah, that's kind of difficult, isn't it? If you weren't there. Now, we're going to take this up. Does everybody remember whether or not they were at the meeting? Because we're going to have to abstain for 31. All right, let me do 6/15 first, I'll take a motion, group, great?
Second.
And I'm going to assume everyone who votes in favor of the minutes, any exceptions? 6/15.
6/15, I have to abstain, I was not in the.
Okay, so staying Richard on 6/15. Okay, here we go. 6/22. Group. Second. Any exceptions?
Me.
And all else, vote all, vote.
Abstain as well, I was at a conference.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay, 7/6, our last meeting, let me have the motion first.
Some loops.
Second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor except two needs abstaining. Nobody, we're all here?
Are we talking July 6?
Yep.
I had COVID, abstained.
You had COVID, oh.
Very sick that day.
We're going to see you in person next time, right?
That's right.
Yay, I won't be here, but I know what you look like. You get all of them in the room, nothing. Okay, so those are all the minutes. There any updates for you, Andy?
I don't think so at the moment. We do have a zoning hearing, we have to have, it's a relatively minor zoning amendment, but that'll be also on the August 17th meeting. Very quick with the city council, in my opinion, it'll be quick. It's a reduction of some of the dimensional standards, very minor tweak to the zoning relative to fire stations that the city is doing. We don't have many of those, but there's one of our city projects, we determined that various would be needed for the project, and it's not clear that those dimensional standards are necessary to be so tight anyway. So the thought was to just amend them. So that's why you have the zoning amendment coming forward for that. But it's a very small amendment. We assume that'll be a very quick meeting with the city council. And we, we know that there, we expect them to be on board, given that it's based on, in part on a product they've already reviewed to some degree, so.
What's happening with SGR units?
Oh, yes, sorry, thank you for the report that you provided. That's been passed on to the council. I understand from the chair of the planning and development committee, Cameron, that he's planning on scheduling the meeting in the first or second week of August. Yeah, I know there's debate about maybe whether that could happen sooner, but I think he's planning on the first or second week of August with the hopes of, if there need to be follow up meetings, getting a council action by the end of the month to ensure that that deadline is met, so. So last meeting in August, I guess, is the, the chair's hope or expectation of a vote by the council.
Any other, anybody else? Don't see anything on the screen, so.
We've got a great first meeting of our ad hoc committee on waterfront zoning study. Making progress. We have something, right, second?
To know, thank you. All right, I will take the motion to adjourn.
So who?
Alvin, second?
A second.
Deb? Anybody opposed to adjourned? Who want to take the vote? Well, let me see you guys up there, hang in there. Hope you don't get it, Bob and Richard, hope you're on the mend. Okay, everybody, I do not.
Thank you.